We'll go ahead and start, call this meeting to order. We'll do a prayer by Ron Jones, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll call.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for the people that came to this meeting and shown an interest in the village. And we pray for the people around this table to make the right decision, to listen, to think about what needs to be voted on tonight. Pray for the sick, especially Ron's wife, who's in the hospital right now. We just lift her up, pray for good healing. We put it all in your hands in this, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. And I especially want to say happy birthday to Cheryl Smith. Since it is her birthday, we're gonna try to...
Sing happy birthday, Cheryl?
Yeah, let's do it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Cheryl. Happy birthday to you.
Good idea. So we'll try to get her out of here on good time tonight so she can park it.
Hey, you can't say that on the air.
I covered it up. Hello, Ron.
Hi. I'm in.
May we have roll call, please?
Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Ridgeby.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yep.
Beverly.
Yes.
You'll have to get them and sign them. You have in your pocket the November 4th Regular Council Meeting Minutes for your approval. Are there any additions or corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Uh, abstain.
Ridgeby.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes. You had in your packet an approved bills list, and you had another one on the table tonight. So you have two to approve. Are there any questions about the bills?
I just got one for the sledge hauling. Was that just two different vendors? You had Whirlers and Mike Sanitation?
Republic did, the guy did, this Mike Sanitation brought in semi-tanker trailers, one blue tank.
I move we approve the bills, unless you have something you want to...
I didn't have time to study them. I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeby.
Yes.
Beverly.
Abstain.
Barth.
I'm in.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Dawn, would you like to come to the podium to address council? You're next on the agenda.
Sure. Okay, so I am here on behalf of my son, who is going to be coming up in February for an Eagle project. And he brought to my attention that he would like to put a gazebo in town on your guys' favorite chunk of property, Arthur and Maine. So I come to you guys to see if that was something he could do, or if you guys are preset on selling the property. So I printed off two pictures of, this is not what he's planning on doing, but something similar to what he wants to do. And he can't get started on it until February, because that's when he gets life. And then, once he becomes life scout, then we can start going forward with project ideas. And before he were to do anything, he would bring it all back to you guys for final approval.
When Dawn approached me about this, you know, I reminded her that you recently made a decision at a council meeting that you preferred just to, in my terms, wash your hands of the lot, and given it opportunity to be sold and a house built on it. So...
We did?
We didn't say anything about being sold. We just agreed and...
Well, we had Troy to check into it about if we could sell the property.
We just wanted to spend a bunch of money.
Right, Troy? Right.
Which could, yeah.
And we could.
I mean, the commissioners, everybody cleared everything, it sounds like, as far as their grant, and they could do whatever needed to be done.
Yeah, and he came up with this idea a while back ago, and he wasn't far enough ranked to really push this thing forward until just recently. And it all happened at the same time. What's that?
Who would pay for that?
He will. Through fundraisers and donations. That's how they do all their Eagle projects.
How do you like to eagle it up down my front yard?
Yeah. I know, I wouldn't mind having one out of my place, too, but I don't foresee that happening. So, and like I said, this is just his, like, that was his first idea. He thought it would be really cool for the community to put something together like this. And I know that was council's original idea, when they got that property. But I told him I'd bring it to your guys' attention, see what you guys thought about it, and if he needs to come up with a Plan B, then we can come up with a Plan B. But I just kinda wanted to give you guys an idea as to what he would like to do.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Especially if he's putting the bill.
Yeah. And so, he would work with, you know, I'm sure there's companies around here that build gazebos, and he would work side by side with them to figure out, and then work with you guys to find something that would fit what everybody wanted, basically.
He's thinking about putting it right in the middle of the lot, is what he's thinking?
I'm thinking so. And then, make sure, because I looked at those, and I thought those were really nice, because they're handicap accessible, they're not up on the stairs or anything. But that's all stuff that he would have to plan and figure out and discuss with you guys.
Is it vinyl?
Well, see, that's the thing, one of them's on concrete, there's no step up at all, and it's vinyl, and the one down below is wood, which is, you know, some maintenance in the future.
Right.
There's a step, you'd have to have a ramp or something, yeah.
Yeah, he would make sure that it would be as low maintenance as possible, and consider putting, like, river stones, river rock around the side of it, so you can spray it, and just keep it grass mode around it. So, but this is like in the very, very beginning stages, he just kinda just wanted to know if he would be able to even pursue it. So, that's why I was bringing it for you guys.
I think it's a nice project. The only concern I would have is if that property wasn't, you know, used for that kind of a park purpose. Would there be a secondary location that he would be able to build something like that and still do the project?
Okay. Yeah.
Not knowing what...
I know they've done some stuff in the past, Eagle Scout projects down there, the park, the park itself.
Yeah, like the rock around there, that might be nice.
I would, just my opinion, I would say, let him go forward. Come up with a plan, come up with what he's thinking, and come back to us to give us all a better understanding of exactly what he's going to do, what's going to be left over for us as a village, and let's take a really good, long look at that.
Okay, well, the problem, though, is it wouldn't be until February at least.
And it's fine, that's fine.
So I didn't wanna, I wasn't sure.
That lot won't go anywhere.
Okay. Okay.
So Troy, legally, can we sell it? I think we kind of...
I think we can, you know, if we wanted to.
I have no idea.
We could keep it.
The lot can be worth...
I don't know. It's a lot, where Bruce would know.
Twenty or so. Twenty, right there. Maybe more, but that's gonna be pretty close.
Pretty good size lot.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
With the building?
It's got a little more width on it than some, I think, it runs in ninety by, what was it, one foot or five or something.
So I guess if we don't put it there, would there be room at the park?
We'd have to look around.
Would that work?
Yeah, I was just throwing it out there.
Trying to save that lot.
Yeah, trying to save the lot, you know? Because, and not to like throw this in the mix, but we kinda use the garage for storage and stuff like that, and it works out really, really well, but...
What about approaching the Xcel Bank where the doer on used to sit, that grass area right next there, down, right downtown?
That'd be kinda cool.
I do, yeah.
Well, it sounds like you have, it sounds like you have some time to figure it out. I don't hear council saying they're gonna go out and sell the property right away, so...
Okay, so we'll sit down with his scout master, and we'll come up with a plan and bring it back.
Bring it, yeah. Good idea.
I think it's great, and I think it's great that the youth of Hicksville wants to do something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, and he thought it'd be cool, you know, like, and I know you and I talked about it, but putting like the red, white, and blue banners around the side for 4th of July, especially when you walk past it during the parade for Memorial Day, I was like, "Yeah, kid, I know." So, I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention that he had some kind of idea for that.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Troy, I got a quick question for you on that. Now, that property, if we would, because, and the certification committee notes, says that the lot would go back to the county, and they would sell it, not us, so who would get the money?
No, I think they're saying, I'd have to confirm that, but I think they're saying they would, they've already deeded it to us, they would sign off on whatever restriction that they have. I mean, I'd have to clarify that with them, but my thought was...
The last thing they mentioned to me was taking it pretty in the land bank.
Oh.
In their county land bank.
Yeah, well, then we wouldn't get the money if it was in the land bank.
That's what I was wondering, because the way they have it written, would it go back to them?
Yeah, we could do that, too. I'm not as up, obviously, the land bank is new, and is it completed yet, or just in the works? I haven't been updated on it.
I think it's in the works.
Yeah, a couple properties in it, so...
I think it's in the works. I mean...
I wouldn't want to get it up.
Okay, we'll go on to boards and commissions. Hix TV had a meeting on October 12th, Saturday. The minutes are in the packet. If anybody has any questions, they can ask Mike Barth.
I'll play.
The nuisance board met November 5th, and they had quite a list of properties there that they're working with. And then, on the table tonight, you had minutes from the Streetlight Property and Sidewalk Committee. Do you have anything you want to say about that, Eric?
Well, those are in the packet. The Streetlight Property.
Those were in the back of their...
They were in the packet.
Oh, yeah, they are, I'm sorry.
They sent those out a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
There's the water and sanitary minutes on the table.
Yeah, that was on the table.
What, how are you gonna move forward with your committee?
Gonna bring it up right now.
Okay, all right.
So, last council meeting, we talked about some concerns on a parking spot, a handicap spot on the corner by Napa, beyond North Maple and East High Street. Actually, Headley's kind of given the idea of maybe making that corner spot a handicap spot. We met about it. The Streetlight Property Sidewalk Committee, we talked to Kent, we asked him about what they've done in the past. He's talked about how Carl Sabo, who lives above Bruce's property, he'd asked for one for a long time on that, on that side of the building, and council had, I guess, denied his request. John Hart requested some special parking in front of his business, that was also turned down. We talked about the spot on the corner, if it was a good spot for a handicap spot, it's not diagonal parking, but it was parking that you'd have to cross over the sidewalk, kind of, and back, back in. If it was handicap van, you wouldn't be able to have any access to the backside. And so, after a lot of discussion, the committee decided two to one to leave it alone and not make the spot handicap. We did check with Troy and see if that's something the committee would make that decision. He said the need full council's vote, one way or the other. There's also pictures in there that I had sent that showed the spot we're talking about. And so, that was the first item we talked about. The second item that got brought up at that meeting, actually got brought up by John Hart, was brought up about, you know, special signage in front of businesses in town, saying that no parking, a towaway zone, parking for patrons only. For example, Napa Machine Shop, Napa Loading Zone, Subway, Slattery Oil, has signs up throughout town. He said he had put signs up saying parking, fifteen minute parking, or whatever, in front of his pizza place, and he was told he had to take his signs down. Troy had said it's not enforceable, the signs that they have saying towaway zone and no parking in front of those businesses. And the committee kinda wanted full council's thoughts on whether or not we leave the signs alone as they have them. I know Napa even had a couple spots where the parking spots had been painted with lines on the road saying no parking, and they continued to park on there, was a concern, too. So, I was trying to give you guys a couple weeks through emails to look over the stuff to kinda have an idea of what was going on tonight, so we could kinda make a decision one way or the other on if we were going to agree on the no handicap spot on the corner, I guess would be topic one. And topic two would be all the additional signage around town for the customers only and loading zone signs and no parking, and if we want to have all those businesses remove those signs or not. Any thoughts?
I would make a motion on item one, that we do not allow it.
The handicap spot, leave it the way it is?
Correct, leave it as it is. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, what was the handicap?
Just the handicap spot.
That's it.
High and Maple.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, all right.
You wanna call a roll, Cheryl?
Baker? Vote no.
Agree with you.
I wanted a handicap spot, no, I do not.
Then...
That'd be yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes is no.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeby?
Yes.
So that's on the handicap spot. Topic two would be on the signs at the businesses that say no parking other than for customers and/or loading signs, lines that are painted across parking spots that are still being used, and thoughts on that?
Well, the one I gotta ask about is, like, Subway, I can see in the front of their building, you know, I can see they'd have to take it out, but on the side of the building, they can leave it there, correct?
Yes.
Is that, we own the, we own the parking?
If they own the parking, they're talking about public spaces that... Yeah, but is the front of the building...
They have signs on the side of the building, but that's actually Subway part owns that.
Right. I'm talking the front of the building.
Yeah, those are the only two signs we're talking about.
Yeah, the front.
It's the front, too.
Okay, but what about Slatteries?
If that picture's correct, is that, is this...
There's actually, there's actually one on that side next to Subway, and there's one on the other side next to the, I don't remember what it's called, Fellowship.
Chapel's office.
Yeah, there's one there, too.
This is actually the side of Subway, right?
Yeah, that's right next to Subway.
Yeah.
So this, this...
This picture's right next to Subway, and then there's an identical sign on the other side in between Slattery Oil and...
This one here, you wouldn't even have to think about it, because if that was, if the Pump Island was still there and he still had a station, nobody could park there.
Right. That's their property.
Yes. Then, if you, and you guys probably weren't here then, Doug Miller was Slattery's spokesman at the time, and when they tore out all that concrete up there, they came to the village and wanted to ensure what the village owned and what they didn't, because they were gonna replace everything that was owned by Slattery Oil. And then, they came back and made a deal with the village, because there had always been water standing on High Street, right there at the stoplight in the crosswalk, and they said, "We'll have our guy do this while he's doing ours, and it'll all be uniform and pretty, and get rid of this wet spot if the village pays for that." So it was really pretty understood where the property lines are, and if you'll notice, Slattery's concrete mark is right in line with Gary Shaw's front yard and everything else. I mean, it's, I really don't think we can tell them what to do with that section, however, we can tell Subway this.
Yeah, no, this is gonna be, might be case by case on some of these, yeah.
Yes.
Well, and the real issue from my perspective is you gotta treat everybody uniformly. So if you're saying, "We're not gonna, on public parking spots, what people do on their own property, which may have to be determined in some ways..."
Right.
"...that's up to them. They could put signs that say, you know, if you go down to Speedy Mart or whatever, and they got signs that say, you know, customer parking only, that's their property right there, they can do that. Anybody else in town, Dr. Bob's can do that, you know, whoever. But if we're talking about public spaces, then everybody ought to be treated uniformly. So if we're, you know, if we're allowing Subway to have their sign out front, or somebody else to have a sign out front, then every business up and down High Street, you know, Bruce ought to have two spots in front of his that say..." And I don't think that's where it should be. But I'm just saying, if you, you can't just say, "Well, we're gonna allow it for this person," but not allow it. It's gotta be uniform across the board. And you don't really want to put a mechanism in place to where if people want those spots, then they go to some committee or they do whatever, because then the first time you say yes to Ron and no to Ron and everything, it's gonna be, "Well, what's it based on? What's the objective reasons? It's just because you don't like me, or, you know, this is a male-oriented business, this is a female-oriented, you know, you're biased for some reason?" You just want to eliminate all possibility of that. The easy way being...
This was established, though. I mean, this body right here established...
But that may be, that's why I said ownership and whatnot.
And the Subway, that was kind of done, too, because this body went up there and put cone, or put...
Barrier...
Concrete barriers up there, curb stops, to keep them from blocking that sidewalk, so the people still walk through. I guess it was the Subway owner didn't like them, or we didn't, somebody here didn't like them?
Bruce, do you have something to say?
We put in, we corrected that water thing, and we changed our sidewalks for bad, and we corrected that water out front, right on the, where the highway comes into the light.
Right.
We put that in, that Slatteries, and corrected that, and ran that up, and we ran another, to the other catch base, and then we put a new catch base in, in our parking lot between us and Post.
Right.
Okay. The curbs and stuff, they were put in there, they're the ones that complained. We didn't know, Brad and I own that, we didn't know anything about those curbs. But we fixed that, and poured all that heavy-duty concrete out front.
In front of Subway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking in front of...
And the drain where that cross, by the crosswalk there, we tied into that while we're doing all the other work. So we fixed that. Slatteries, whatever they did on that side, I don't know.
But Slatteries is behind the sidewalk, though, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Like you said, or somebody said, "How can we say you can't put it there?"
And we could just say that all sign, or all parking that is public parking can't have a sign specifying no parking or towaway, and all those signs gotta be removed.
Exactly, Troy said, treat everybody...
Did you have something to add?
I was gonna say the parking blocks lasted a day because the rear ends of cars are sticking out in the first lane of traffic on High Street, which I don't think you wanted that.
You were saying in front of like Subway, I'm just throwing that as an example, the front section is not owned by them, that is actually...
Don't believe them, I mean, Bruce would know better, that's just public right of way, right?
I think it isn't.
All the way down.
Slatteries, if you look at that...
Talk on Main Street, the Main Street portion.
If you caddy corner from my office, if you go up, you're on West High, and you come to traffic light there in front of Slatteries, that, I think that property follows that sidewalk. And if you do, there's room for a couple cars to park along there, a lot of times. On the back of our building, there's two parking spaces, we leased that to Jack Teful for his church, you know what I mean? But technically, those cars, I'm pretty sure, if you look into it survey-wise, those cars could be parked all the way up to the traffic light in there if they wanted to do it. Might be a real bear for anybody turning a corner there. But I think all that is North Main Street right of way.
What if, what if... But it wouldn't be designated as a parking?
The Pump Island was still there.
What I'm saying.
What if it was still a station?
What, what, what do you mean?
You saying you could still park there?
I'm saying unless the council or somebody has passed some other law around there, I think ownership of that, I think that's all North Main Street right of way. I'm not suggesting that they make it public parking or go out and line it. That'd be, I think it'd be a nightmare from a traffic stand going, "Oh, yeah, using that." But yeah, but I think, you know, Ron, so much of that stuff, as you know, years ago, they put in the pumps and the tanks and did it, nobody looked at any, but I think that's all right of way there.
That was a gas station long before I was ever born.
Yeah.
And that's been, like, almost twenty years.
I still say that part, that area that paved is right of way, North Main Street right of way, or South Main Street. I think it's all part of the right of way. But again, I'm not suggesting that they come in and make that public parking.
We never, we never brought Slattery Oil aware of that when they come up and ask where they should stop with concrete.
Yeah.
So it would be safe to say to have, put a motion out there for any public parking spot in town cannot have a sign with any kind of sign...
Well, I think we need to, I think we need to go on, Eric, and catch these loading zones before we do another...
That's green.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Has the village considered drafting like a downtown ordinance for parking, where you don't have to handle it as a case by case basis, but this is the downtown business district, and within the business district, these are the parking regulations?
We have parking regulations downtown.
So then, why would these not apply to the downtown parking regulations?
They should. I think that's what they're saying, is they're trying to get them back in line. They've, on their own, at some spots designated things that...
It was before me, but there's, let's say, for instance, lines that have been, parking spots have been painted with white lines across it to designate as their own spot. But is that considered the downtown, the business district?
You're going off the side street.
Not really.
It's on the side street, so...
It's a side street, yeah.
But it's public parking. Maybe like in front of your house, blocking off that, "I can't have anyone park, you know, come to my house," but they can park in front of your house. I mean, side street. Do you specifically name streets being part of the downtown business district, business district, and follow those regulations you set forth?
You could do that as well, as long as it was uniform in the different district. You know, if there's some downtown parking, everything applies to everybody. Then you're gonna get people complaining that are just downtown as to why the person around the corner from them can, you know, guys from Two Bandits are right here on, they're in the downtown, so they can't do it. But the Palace Pizza has the little spots on the side, they can put Palace Pizza parking only on the side, because it's not considered downtown, you know? That's, or maybe you could, you could include some of those as part of the business district or whatever, you can say the, a block each way, you know, within, and then go from there. Or do your risk that you got people at their houses striping out in front or putting something so that nobody...
Like right now, our downtown business district has the three-hour parking regulations in it.
It's only on High Street.
Right.
Just High Street.
On High Street, so...
And it stops...
Nothing on Maple, nothing on Maple.
Or at both stoplights?
Pardon me?
The three hour parking stops at both, Maple and, Maple and Main.
Yep.
So that wouldn't, wouldn't take care of any problems that we have now anyhow.
No, I mean...
No, no, everyone that's on this list, none of those are, in those areas.
Yeah.
These are on Maple and Main and farther west, I mean West Side Street.
Yeah.
So legally, they couldn't be towed away, legally, at these side streets?
No, you could park in the Napa loading zone, and they could, that'd be an illegal tow if they had somebody towed, cause that's public parking.
But what about, let's say like spot that used to be a parking spot, now it's painted white?
Still park there, cause I assume the village didn't paint it that way.
I, I was told that they didn't, but I don't know.
Here's the thing, on, on that particular spot, our village people were painting stripes. And a certain owner that happened to be on this committee, went over and stopped him and said, "Come over here and paint these lines for me." Yes, our village guys painted those lines by his command.
Take it back out then. But yeah, I mean, that's, they're still not enforceable, cause it's not, the village doesn't have any restrictions on those areas. Our restrictions only apply in the downtown area, the three hours and, and whatnot, so, no.
I guess an option would be to, in, to...
Extend the business district?
Extend the busy, business district around the corners. I mean, I think as Taylor's suggesting, and...
Define it. Well, if it's defined, then, then, and in anything, you know, in the instance of, regardless of however long ago it happened, there's a variance on record that we, the village accepted this, and that's the process.
I, I would agree with you 100% Taylor, except for what we're doing right now. If we, if we pass an ordinance, just like you just said, then every one of those people is gonna go, "Well, I grandfather in." We have to stop it now, before we change, you know what I'm saying?
I think it would affect a lot of renters' parking, you know, all over.
Right.
And then where are they gonna park?
And is the subway still have apartments above it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And do you have parking for the...
Yeah. I mean, we own, we bought additional parking, that was owned by Wilderson years ago, we bought it. But some of the tenants park around the side, like in front of Gary Shaw's, along the street.
Okay. Because that, when I went up and talked to Subway, that was his concern, the renters were parking there. And that stopped, that, these signs stopped it, so he wanted them signs left.
No, I stopped them. I told them, "If you're gonna rent them, I should not parking out front." I know, maybe I don't have the right to tell them that, but I just won't rent them if they park out front. It's just a courtesy thing, I told them.
Oh, of course.
"If you're gonna rent from me, you're not gonna park out there, even though it's public parking."
Okay. Because I know Subway did not want them signs removed, because that was the reasoning he gave me, so...
Well, they have to deal with the same thing everybody else does. If you go to Vitamin Herb, and Bob Post, you know, and they all park out in front of their buildings, there used to be pumps at Post years ago, you know, what stops those people from parking at Subway, and going down and talking to somebody down at Post. I mean, they can't really, they can do that.
You're gonna need to either probably enforce if you're doing some of that too, because here's where the problem becomes. I don't think there's anything wrong making that public, and making them take their signs down. I wouldn't be upset with it all, but if it's gonna be a defined area, then I think you also define whether there's three hour parking there too. You know what I mean? If that's gonna be part of your district, you don't have people just going up there and carpooling and parking in front of Subway, or the, or the vitamins store, or any store.
Well, I oppose a parked vehicle out for sale in that same space that's sitting there for, so...
Right.
If you're gonna enforce public parking, I think you also have to enforce three hour parking, if that's part of the same, falls under the same...
We don't enforce it uptown, so, why would we wanna start out here on...
How would you like to proceed?
Scary question. Think we probably need to have another meeting with, talk with Troy, and, we think...
Find some parameters.
Find some parameters, yeah. There's more than just one, I mean, it's hard to vote on. I think there needs to be something voted on with the lines that are currently there, either to get rid of them, and then also what the parking district is, I guess for the uptown, and whether or not we establish three hour parking, or the side roads are exempt to that. Because you get people, you know, let's say next to you on North Main that live in the apartments, they're there for more than three hours, I don't know where else they would park.
I own the parking lot back behind me, a lot of it, cause it's close.
Yeah, and a lot of times if they can't, if they can't get one of those parking spots, let's say it's busy uptown, Two Bandits or something, they park at the bank.
Well, we have everybody parking our parking lot, we have a big parking lot out back, and doesn't matter what's going on, there's Two Bandits people, I mean, I don't care, I don't have a problem with it. We own parking.
Matt, do you have, do you have a comment you'd like to make, Matt?
I was just gonna say, I guess if you'd, like, for our building, we don't really have much parking behind our building that, that we own. So if you extend the, which, I mean, I guess doesn't really make, the only thing that would affect me is if you extend the business zone to those side streets for three hour parking. For us, for our business, are we gonna have to go out and move our cars every three hours, or...
Preferably you won't park there.
But, I mean, really, we wouldn't have anywhere to, I mean, for us business, we don't really have parking out back, so we wouldn't really have anywhere to...
Yeah, cause you park off to the side instead of out front, so you're not taking...
But if you extend, but, yeah, if you extend it to, and make that downtown for three hours...
Yeah.
And if you do a lot of figures on the town, I guess that would be the only...
What if you just notified the owners that they can't enforce it, if it's on public property? They probably know they can't enforce it, but that doesn't stop, I'm sure one of them knows that he can't enforce it, but he knows that if the lines are there, 95% of the people in town are not gonna park there, thinking, "Well, I'm gonna park there because I'll get towed." You could, I mean, you could say that, but you can't really, go ahead, Ron, I'm sorry.
Well, the one on South Maple, I think that's the H&amp;W, and that's actually a driveway going into the building, so I understand why.
Right. No, he never, there's no park that ever goes on, that's, that one, yeah, that's on South Maple.
Yeah, south, that's what I'm saying. You know, I don't think we can say, "Hey, anybody can park in front of a driveway going in," right?
There's no, it's not blocked in front of the driveway.
Well, no, there's a sign there.
When I parked my semi there, back in the eighties, when I lived in the house beside there, and I come home in the middle of the night, one night, and just gonna drop in, shower and leave, and, and I parked my semi there, truck and trailer, and, and I was past that door, the trailer was past it. I got the police called on me by property owners, and, and...
It just says, "Do not..."
They couldn't make me move.
Yeah. I can see this one, "Do not walk drive," you know, they won't be able to...
I understand that, yeah.
Well, we will set up another, uh, meeting for our committee, and try to hash out some of these and bring it back to council.
We really need, uh, like Bruce and, and a few of these property owners, because this, it's gonna get a little bit...
It's gonna get nasty.
Sticky, because, uh, you know, it's just like Matt said, I mean...
Right, oh no, I agree.
Where are you gonna park, and, and, uh, different ones, I know all, all the guys from, uh, Chinese restaurant, they park along the side there. Uh, I know that guy just walked in the door, his mom and aunt's gonna be really happy, and there's gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be a pleasant thing.
We wanna pick a day and time now for a meeting, so they're all aware of it?
Sure.
Guys, I think you can take, and I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do, but I think on some of these things, like on the side of my building, on Main Street, I, I don't have any parkings that says towed or anything, it's public parking, and I know that, you know? But on some of those, where it would hurt businesses, such as Matt or some of those, I don't think there's, it sounds crazy that you can't just make a uniform, you know, not, let's just, let's take the village building, let's take the village garage. Is that public parking?
Yeah, people park there all the time?
If people want to park up there and leave them there, you know what I mean? So I think you can still define the business area, but I think you can individually make your rules on what's what, whether they're three hours or not.
No, just like with yours, uh, when Carl's out in San Francisco or Hollywood making a movie, who's gonna, who's gonna move his vehicle every three hours?
Well, that's right, and if that's what you decide to make that three hour parking, then all my people are gonna have to park on the side. Parking back where I own the parking. If that's the rule, that's the rule.
Then, then you've got people blocking the doors, so that Odie Pedder can't get out, she's running around trying to find people that own that car.
That's true.
It's gonna get nasty.
Well, plus you gotta remember your three hour parking is when you turn business hours, it's not overnight.
Now, that doesn't help Matt any, of course, cause you're business hour.
I would think you would leave it like it is downtown, and not worry about the side streets.
But get rid of the illegal parking?
Yeah, all the illegal spots.
All the illegal loading zones, all the illegal, no parking, get rid of it, and...
I agree.
How about we set up another meeting, and then we bring it back, when, when it works?
This week is a shot for me.
How about next week, Thanksgiving week?
Name it.
Monday?
Next week, Monday next week?
Twenty fifth?
As long as I don't have to be, um, in Fort Wayne, I will be here. Uh, what time you wanna do it, bud?
That's what I'm looking.
So...
Anytime after three.
What day are you looking at?
Twenty fifth? Twenty fifth, 3:00 PM?
Twenty fifth, I'm good all day.
At three?
That'll work.
Okay.
So if there's any businesses or anything out there that would like to express any input, we'll be meeting on the 25th of November at 3:00 PM to discuss parking.
Here in the council room?
Yep, here in the council room.
And those areas would include, uh, Napa, Slattery Oil, Subway...
Or anyone else, Collins, Gilford...
Yeah, anybody else that is, that has got parking, uh, if they park their vehicles, or their tenants, or their employees, on those spots for longer than three hour periods really should attend this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, how about on the table tonight, you had waters and sanitary meeting minutes from November 7th. Does anyone wanna comment on those minutes?
This is a project we're kinda pushing up a little bit more, quicker with the long-term control plan. We've been having issues with that lift station down there. We had an engineer design it, it's kinda given us options, submitted that to EPA, they said, you know, as long as you change it, they were okay with any change with the long-term control plan. But in the process of that, we're thinking about hiring a different engineer to actually complete the project. There are some good funding options out there, and grants that we can apply for. So we wanna kinda push it off and to start working on it now, of course, go into next year. Kent's been working with RCAP and, um, trying to see if we can get some grants for the project. And in the meantime, start advertising for engineers to do the final plans, and then construction phase of it, so that's what we're working on.
Thank you. Are there any other council committees that would like to give any reports?
Mayor, if I could, just to continue on with Mike there, I know everybody knows that that lift station down there causes us problems, we have to pull the pumps constantly. Talking with Jeff, him and, and his cohort, have that down to a science. When it does plug, which is at least once a week, they can have it out, fixed, and back in in 30 minutes. So that's why we're gonna continue as we are, instead of making it a mad dash to do something quick and foolish and expensive. Thank you.
The beautification committee minutes are in the packets, they're on the table tonight, from October 28th. So, we will go on to the administrative report. I'll sleep, pick up one.
Snowy.
People do not have to call us. Last week put us behind, I mean, couldn't suck in too into the snow, and 20 degree temperatures. We're sucking ice more than anything. We'll be out the next few weeks, they did 11 loads today, but we can't get every street, so we'll get you when we get there. So just get them out to the road. I put the paper from the EPA on your desk this afternoon, that's all related to the asset management process we've been going through. Jesse was supposed to get a letter into them by October 30th, you know, with all the dates and stuff. And that all came back fine, so we should be good to go on that. Beautification committee's got much load pressure up, but I'll talk to people about that later. Don't wanna start a fight. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
I'll be anxious to hear what, how you're gonna pressure up. Okay, any questions for Kent? Thank you. Solicitors report?
Yes, I got a number of pieces of legislation beforehand. I put two things on the desk tonight, one was just kinda the general solicitors report that I've been doing. The one thing that I'll point out, two things, the one references the memo on the street trees, which there's like a three page memo after that, discussing the ownership of the trees and the tree lawn, and other miscellaneous things addressed with that, those issues. The other thing has been, at least two, maybe three people have asked me about the process, once Ron assumes, um, his seat as the mayor, and the filling of his spot. The revised code sets out the procedure for that, and we've kind of gone through it at least once or twice recently. I know particularly when Larry resigned, and Mike moved over to be the mayor, and then Mike's seat was open, we had to appoint him. But as you recall, once there is a vacancy, it's filled by an election by the council, uh, for somebody to fill out the remainder of the term. Um, and that election can't take place until there's actually a vacancy, which won't happen until Ron is sworn in and assumes his position. And then, what I suggested is, in the next month or so, he could be laying the groundwork, having people submit their names if they're interested, and things of that nature, and maybe even inviting them to a meeting or two in December, and asking them to, why they're interested, you know, however you wanna handle that. And then, in the first meeting of January, going ahead, and for lack of a better term, having an election, where somebody would be nominated, and eventually would be, uh, elected by the council to fill that spot, and then they could be sworn in, and basically take their seat, and we could go from there. If by chance it's not handled within 30 days of the vacancy, it gets a unique situation here, where Ron would basically be able as the mayor to appoint a successor. I assume it won't get to that, we've handled it in the past, but that's the procedure. Anybody need a refresher?
You have left a year.
What's that?
You have a year left after January?
Two years.
Two years.
Same term as yours. Yeah. So, so that's the procedure, so how, I don't know if somebody wants to announce what people can do if they're interested, and...
Here's what we can do, we can just put her in that seat, because she'll be off, and we don't have...
It's not dissimilar to what happened before, I think Bruce got a, Bruce Hart got a point into...
Bruce came back twice.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, probably still...
So if somebody's interested, they should, they should email or contact...
Contact a member, email Diane, or, uh...
I'm gonna put something in the paper.
Fiscal officer.
It'd be in the paper.
And then, like I said, maybe, one of the future meetings in December, people wanna come and introduce themselves, and why they might be interested in helping, and, and we can do that all in open session. And then I know in the past, and one of the things when I did some research on it, the vote itself has to be in open session, and not by secret ballot and things of that nature, so...
So you nominate one person?
There's various ways you could do it, like somebody could make a motion that, you know, I move it so and so, and then you can vote, and assuming majority vote would, would win the, or have the seat for the remainder of the term, so...
Sounds like you've never had this problem before.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Twice. I was appointed. Mick Patreski.
I mean, more than one person interested.
There's been more than one person.
You've taken Earl Milton's lunch, did you?
Yeah. There was two or three, as I recall, at one time.
The last time council solicited letters of interest, and you talked to me, it wasn't just automatic, cause they figured it's gonna automatic, why waste people's time?
Exactly. You interested?
I'm interested.
There's one person.
There you go.
Okay, Troy?
So, to get started on the legislation, the first thing I have...
Everybody's got to remind me, though.
No, no.
Is ordinance, ordinance 2019-15, a third reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 925.02 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to revise water rates.
Make motion to approve?
Second.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Third reading of ordinance 2019-16 by caption only, and ordinance amending chapter 951 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding refuse collection.
So move.
Second.
No call?
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-17, a second reading by caption only, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees. Ordinance 2019-18, a second reading by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village. Ordinance 2019-19, first reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 345.10 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding multi-use vehicles. That's the same basically as the draft that I put forward, I just put it into ordinance form. First reading on that. Then we have a second reading of resolution 2019-13, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement and release with Haynes Enterprises, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Again, it doesn't have to be an emergency if somebody wants to wait. Second reading of resolution 2019-14, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2020. Resolution 2019-15, a second reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Jones and Henry Engineers LTD for design work and construction services related to the new village wellfield and associated improvements. First reading of resolution 2019-16 by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the police chief to dispose of property no longer needed for municipal purposes pursuant to revised code 721.15 and declaring an emergency. And the chief can talk more about, more about, let's see on the back, there's Exhibit A, they're in the process of acquiring new firearms. As part of that process, they can trade in the old firework, firearms and receive credit against the purchase price, similar to what we do in vet vehicles that we've traded in the past. So, in order to authorize the, that the property's not needed and that they can be traded in, we have to do this, this way. Because the purchase price of the guns themselves are underneath the threshold, we don't need a separate resolution authorizing the purchase of those, just this. And the process will be, they'll receive a credit against the purchase price on those new weapons, and that's in process, I believe.
Right, Mark?
Yeah, once you approve. Yeah, so, that's, in further emergency would be just...
Chief, do you know what they're allowing us for these, six guns, six, seven, one, two?
Seven guns, they're giving us $200 a piece.
$200 a piece?
Basically $200 a piece.
I'm gonna press suspend the rolls on that one.
I'll second that.
No call?
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly? Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Second and third reading of resolution 2019-16 by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the police chief to dispose of property no longer needed for municipal purposes pursuant to revised code 721.15 and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Your call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
The only other thing I have, just from a nudist standpoint, I will be off, out of the office next week, but I'll be around and available, so if somebody needs me, call my cell phone.
Thank you, Troy.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other business they need to ask Troy about? Police chief's report?
I have none. That was the only thing I had was fire.
Do they have any questions for you?
Have you hired the second?
I have not yet.
You're close to it?
What's that?
Are you close to hiring the second officer?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think we're going to all know more Thursday.
Good. Do you have anyone? Oh, sorry. Anyone here from the fire department or EMS to give any reports? I don't see anyone. Okay.
Sounds like they're busy.
I know.
That's true. Val, do you have a report to come up and give counsel? Does anyone have any questions for Val?
We have a meeting Wednesday, right?
Everything's buttoned up and done, right?
Well, just done last week. Time to get some new...
As far as any water, it's all literized, being ready to go.
Something with the park. We had met real quick, just a couple of us, Val and Gary and Emma and Kirkpatrick from Mommy Valley, Kent and Mike, and kinda just did an informal meeting at the park. We're talking about sidewalk. There's been some interest on a walkway through the park. So I've been going to some meetings in Defiance, looking at some grant applications and seeing if there's a way to get money for that kind of project. But they kinda did, she invented a preliminary and I'll bring in all the park board meeting tomorrow night, but they're gonna discuss it more in depth then. But kinda walked through the park a little bit, looked at some different areas. I know I would always like to have seen, and I think Eric was working on it too, is a sidewalk to go from Martha to Spencerville. There's no sidewalk, the sidewalk stops there about by the entrance kinda to the park, well, long before that.
Right.
About to the Veterans Memorial. But to see that sidewalk extend all the way down and keep the kids kinda off the side of streets.
There's a time that the Rotary had looked at doing that for a project too, Mike, so you might even check within the facility for a project to help out, huh?
We had like Hicksville Area Foundation was looking at maybe doing some stuff, but I know there's a lot of interest, especially maybe a walkway or a walking path at the park, but there's some grants and some interest, so kinda bringing all those entities together to formulate a plan.
A lot of the land's on Defiance County, I guess Metropolitan Park Board and see if they might be interested in putting some money towards it also.
Thank you.
We had talked quite a while ago about the pavilion and redoing some interior and new cupboards and stuff like that and then somebody was brought in paperwork to tear down the chimney and do a bunch of other stuff and where did we ever go with that?
He's supposed to be getting me his final report here shortly.
Who's that?
The architect of Bowling Green. Because if nothing else, I mean, we can still redo some of the kitchen stuff if they want, but I had him primarily look at how he can fix that roof permanently, so he's supposed to be getting me some options on that and then once we'd see that, then you'd know it could be used in the kitchen.
Sure, sure.
Fixing that and tearing it out.
Then you put some money in the budget for that, right? So that, I was looking at it, I saw some money there just in case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cheryl?
You only have three reports, the fund status and then the police department collections and mayor's court collections. And I put in a letter from the Humane Society since we're in our process of our budget. They're asking for another donation. Don't shoot me.
We only gave half of what we said we could give.
Yep.
Well, we gave half of what they asked for.
Asked for, yeah.
Cheryl has some stats that she's just dying to tell you.
Yeah. Yeah. If you have, the average cat have two litters of five kittens a year, twice a year in their lifetime, you're gonna end up with 120 cats. And 120 cats over their lifetime will make 14,000 cats and that's all from not spaying one cat. So in the, our actual 267 that they did last year, if 15% came from Hicksville, even if it's not just the village, that means 40 cats. And by spaying those, you've saved the village 4,800 kittens. So it is worth it.
More than that.
I think if you go down to Elm Street trailer, they could start their own village. I'm just saying.
My backyard, well, between and what's going on in that lot behind my house, I, so far, caught two groundhog and three coon in my live trap. The cats have to sit outside, they have to get an appointment to get in the trap because the groundhogs and the coons are too busy getting in it. But something needs done.
So they want their payment before the end of the year, right?
Well, they just sent a letter asking us for another payment.
And what we, they have, and what was that amount?
1,400. 1,450.
And I had thought we had asked them to be more specific on where these animals, I mean, people gotta actually take them in. You know, if they're coming from Hicksville, surrounding area, I thought we'd kinda wanna know if they're coming from our community rather than the county.
The problem was they were using Hicksville addresses, which incorporates a lot more than just Village of Hicksville, obviously.
Right, right.
So when they say 15% Hicksville, it's not Village of Hicksville.
So 1,450?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we've paid that amount.
Yeah, we did that last year.
And they wanted 20, 2,900.
I mean, they'll take whatever you want to give them, because they are our cats and we don't want them having babies.
We didn't give them the half up front.
Well, that didn't say anything.
I think we're gonna see a program progress.
How many they did from Hicksville.
So we spent 1,500 bucks, have we seen it slow down? How much money can we throw at this to see it go from, back to zero?
No. Exactly.
You can throw endless amount of money at that and you'll never see it, see it end, come to an end.
So what are you saying?
Might as well throw money in a burn barrel.
Give everybody a pellet gun?
I just think it's a waste of money.
What are we gonna do with this cat population?
It's never gonna end. You can give them a million dollars and I'll promise you, you'll still have cats like crazy around town.
We have not had any problems with cats. We don't take...
Well, no, that's because you live on Lake Road.
No. No, but we've had cat calls, it's not that many, and one, I've had injured cats that the Humane Society or the Humane Agent would not respond.
Well...
So, and the purpose of it is, the individual that finds the cat, all right, has to take it to them.
Right.
Okay? That's ridiculous.
We had another, because I was semi-involved with it, then I pawned it off on Mark, so I know there's been at least...
And the board had to come to that because we couldn't even get anybody from the Humane Society or the Humane Agent. And the cat was injured.
If anyone is in favor of this, if, I mean, we could always just put some amount in the budget, that doesn't mean that we, we could put in the budget, doesn't mean we have to give it to them, but...
But we have to decide this year, right, the payer?
If, no, this year's all taken care of. It was this year that...
They wanted you to put it in the budget for next year.
Cheryl brought it to your attention to see if you want it.
They ask, they ask in this that we're requesting you consider providing the second half of the funds approved for 2018.
Didn't pay half of it.
For this year?
Yes.
They're not asking for next year. Next year they're gonna ask again.
You're correct.
Well, we decided at the time that was a one-time thing.
No, we said we were gonna give them half of it.
Okay, so we're giving half of it.
Now they're asking for the other half, yeah, this year.
I assumed when we sold that before, we said we'd give them half.
No, because we said we're gonna give them half, we're gonna see how the program worked and we'd decide later on in the year.
I agree with that.
That's exactly what I ask. That's a lot of money you're throwing away.
Okay, what's the commissioners' position on this? Because they funded it also?
Yep.
They paid theirs.
So if the Defiance gave something, Hicksville gave something and the commissioners gave something.
Defiance gave their full amount, the commissioners gave their full amount, they're asking for us to give the other half of ours to give our full amount.
You know, the thing is, is we've spent $1,400 probably in a lot worse ways and we've had complaints about cats forever.
Yep.
This seems like it would be like a good start, in my opinion. Now, if you guys, I respect your opinions, if you don't care to do it, that's fine, why don't someone just take a vote whether to either...
I'd rather, I'd rather find out how many cats are actually getting from Hicksville because the residents have to take the cat to their facility and have this done.
That would not happen.
You know?
Yeah, it's not.
The people need to be aware to take care of the problem. That's where it starts.
Mm-hmm.
I have the cats. People that are gonna take a ferret, load it up in their car and drive to the plant.
I would, because I'm trying to catch my neighbor's cat, because it's over at my house all the time.
Come to our neighborhood.
Most of them can't catch. It never shows up on a Friday, I can tell you that.
Smart, smart cats.
Well, let's, let's throw it on the table. I move we pay their other half.
I'm not, but I wanna make myself clear. I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating even for the other half as much as...